If I could get everybody to.
Recording in progress.
Everybody take a seat, and we'll get started. Good evening, welcome to the June 13th Oceanside Planning Commission meeting. Actually, for those that are standing, your timing is actually good. If I can get everybody's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Repeat after me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. City Planner, can you do a roll call, please?
Yes, Chairman Rosales.
Present.
Commissioner Balma.
Present.
Commissioner Dodds.
Present.
Vice Chair Morrissey.
Here.
Commissioner Custer. And Commissioner Simons.
Here.
Let the record show that five Commissioners are present and Commissioner Custer is absent.
Thank you. For those of you in attendance, we have a number of items tonight under the public hearings we are not going to be considering or dealing with Item 6, which has been continued until July 25th. That's the item related to Ocean Camp. So again, Item 6 is continued until July 25th. Moving on then, communications on matters not on tonight's agenda. Do we have any slips from the audience to speak on, again, items not on tonight's agenda? We do not, okay. Thank you. So we'll move to approval of minutes from our last meeting, which was May 23rd. Any discussion from Commissioners? Seeing none, I'll look for a motion for approval of those minutes.
I motion that we approve the minutes from last Planning Commission.
Thank you. We have a motion to approve the May 23rd, 2022 minutes. Second.
I'll second that.
Second, Vice Chair Morrissey. No discussion, we'll go ahead and vote.
Looks like we may be having a technical difficulty here.
Do it again.
We'll go ahead while that's being checked on with an oral vote.
Commissioner Dodds?
Yes.
Commissioner Balma?
Yes.
Vice Chair Morrissey?
Yes.
I am a yes, and Commissioner?
Yes.
Chairman Rosales, let the record show the minutes approved, 5:00.
Thank you. Okay, moving on. Consent calendar, we don't have anything on tonight's agenda listed. We do not have anything under transportation items, so we'll go to our first public hearing item. Hearing item number four is consideration of a tentative map development plan and two conditional use permits and a regular COSA permit for a four-story mixed-use development located at 802 South Pacific Street. It's a mixed-use development. The applicant is G17 LLC. I will start with disclosures. Staff report. I believe we got some correspondence emails, and I drove by the location. Commissioner Dodds, disclosures?
Staff reports, corresponding emails, and I did drive by the site.
Thank you. Commissioner Balma?
I also have the same, as well as I talked to a couple of the neighbors.
Vice Chair Morrissey?
I read the staff report and drove by the site.
Thank you. Commissioner Simons?
Staff report and drove by the site.
Great, thank you. Welcome, Mr. Nightingale. Looks like you're going to walk us through a presentation.
All right. Thank you, Chairman, members of the Planning Commission, and members of the public. I'm Scott Nightingale, here from the Planning Division, present Agenda Item Number Five for the consideration of a development plan, conditional use permit to construct a medical office building within the Tri-City Medical Campus located at 4002 Vista Way.
Scott, if I could interrupt you.
Oh.
I think, yeah, Item 4, at least on my agenda, has the Pacific Street.
Yeah. I had different disclosures.
I disclosed on something else. Add details.
We're calling an audible, and we're going with.
That was a test.
That was a test.
We're awake.
We're, yeah, trying to see if they pay attention. Okay.
Thank you, Scott.
It still is Agenda Item Number Four, but it's for a tentative map development plan, two conditional use permits, and a regular coastal permit to construct a four-story mixed-use development. A four-story mixed-use development will consist of 10 condominiums, three hotel units, a subterranean parking garage, a 1,340 square-foot ground-floor commercial space located approximately on .2-acre site at 802 South Pacific Street. Subject request is for a tentative parcel map would create the One Aerospace Condo Map, would provide 10 airspace condominiums with three hotels, a ground-floor commercial, all pursuant to Article of the subdivision. And a development plan is needed for the actual construction of the building, the request for the four-story mixed-use building with everything I discussed. And one of the two conditional use permits is to actually allow the vertical mixed-use project consisting of a four-story, 45-foot-high building. A conditional use permit is required for any type of mixed-use development in the coastal zone. This property is Zone C1 coastal zone, so therefore it's a use permit. And another conditional use permit is needed for the hotel use. Per Article 4, Section 414 KK2, any type of accommodation use, tourist, hotel, motel, requires a conditional use permit. And lastly, based on the site's location within the coastal zone and the appealable jurisdiction of the coastal zone, a coastal permit is needed. Here's an image of the site. It's Zone C1. It's located in the southeast corner of the intersection of Wisconsin Avenue and South Pacific Street at 802 South Pacific. Like I said, the zoning is C1. It's neighborhood commercial, has a general plan land use destination of general commercial. And it's surrounded by primarily an eclectic, single-family to multifamily uses, pretty much in all directions. And you do have commercial uses along Wisconsin Avenue as you move east away from the ocean and towards the railroad track. Here's an image of the site. Site consists of a 10,018-square-foot parcel. It's created as a part of the Myers Edition back in 1885. Site is currently vacant. It's relatively flat with a slight slope towards the west. There hasn't been much development on this site since the mid-'80s. Per historic imagery, it suggests that the site was utilized by several residential cottages that were demolished in the early 1980s. I don't know if you can make this out, but that's where the site is there in the blue arrow, and there's, it says, some type of residential development. Here's an image of these first level, actually ground level, the subterranean garage. This tentative map would consist of a subterranean parking garage, residential condos, three hotels, all inter-dispersed throughout the building on the second, third, and fourth floor. The ground floor will just primarily consist of the commercial restaurant, access to the garage. It's actually going to be a coffee shop, which will pretty much wrap all of Wisconsin Avenue and then wrap towards South Pacific Street. Several right-of-way improvements will be implemented as a part of this development, such as removal of the South Pacific Street curb apron, which is located on the southwestern portion of the property. That'll gain more public parking by reconstructing the curb. Several, as you can see here, several landscape improvements. It will provide several street trees, low-line shrubbery, as well as landscaping. So they basically will beautify the whole perimeter of the site. Here's an image of the underground parking garage, which will provide 18 spaces with five options of tandem spaces for residents and the hotel. Developer will have to submit a management plan that basically lays out the parking management for the commercial uses, if there were to be any type of valet services or usage of the tandem. Here's an image of the ground floor, which consists of the actual restaurant, as I said, like I said, wrapping, pretty much fronting all of Wisconsin Avenue, the garage access off of South Tate Street, and four condominium units. Here's an image of the second floor, which will consist of one hotel unit, one condo unit, and three upper floors of those three units below. And here's an image of the third floor, which would consist of another hotel unit and three condominium units. All of the hotel units will be pretty much located towards the rear of the property, so that there won't be any visitor-type activity occurring on Pacific or Wisconsin. It'll just primarily be off the corner there on Tate. And here's the fourth level, which will consist of one additional hotel, two condos. And lastly, here's the roof, which, there will be no roof access to the residents or the hotel visitors. This will be strictly only for maintenance purposes. It will consist of solar photic arrays, panels, and mechanical equipment. The development, like I said, consists of 10 condos. Five of those condos are primarily under 1,750 square feet, as you can see here, ranging from three to four bedrooms with three baths. They do have their own private open space balconies, as well as their own private one-car garage down below. And they do have bicycle parking located in the garage as well. Six of the 10 units will consist of 1,800 square feet and will be three beds, three baths, and as well have their own private balconies. Three hotel units are larger hotels, consist of 840 square feet, and will be two bedrooms with one bath. And the commercial space, which, like I said, will primarily consist of a coffee shop, will be on the ground floor, and three spaces will be allocated for that. Here's an image of the elevations. Staffed worked with the applicant on designing a more street-friendly type of use here, understanding that this is a high pedestrian, high vehicular site in the coastal zone. We wanted to use that, not only provided commercial frontage along Wisconsin, but then also gave the impression that there would give some street activity on Pacific Street. And so we worked with them on wrapping it around Pacific and having it on Wisconsin So this project would not only enhance its surrounding through the landscaping, the architectural design, and the use of high-quality materials, but will provide a little bit of activity to an underutilized site. The architecture here is a contemporary architecture design that draws from many of the newly infill developments that have been built throughout the city. This image here is looking from Tate Street towards the ocean, so this is what you see from the rear. You have access to the underground parking garage. We worked with them on providing some transparency here, so there's still some of those private views, which are not necessarily, we don't have any regulations on private views, on blocking private views, but they still, they incorporated some transparency to allow for some breakage, but there's still some of those windows that you can see through, especially down towards the ground floor, where you can have some views of the ocean. And lastly, with the project being in close proximity to the neighbor to the south, the condo complex, we received a few comments during the public hearing, or Public Community Outreach Meeting, and regarding the bulk, the scale, and just the shadowing effect that this project would have on the neighbors. So what they provided is, they actually have an image here. I'll go to the camera. We worked with them on ensuring that none of the windows will be peering into the existing windows, so there's no windows offset from one another. As you can see here, this is the existing. And the proposed windows are in the, for the new development are in yellow, so as you can see, there wouldn't be any impacts. And back to the presentation here, they have this living, somewhat of a living wall to break up the massing. They do have some articulations in the front, so there's some elevations that you can still peek around and still see coastal views down towards the north. And then, like I said, they're providing landscaping for some additional buffering. Reviewing this project, staff reviewed the project based on the C1 zoning. This project met all development standards in terms of density. Their requirement here is one unit per 1,000. They're providing 10 units. They meet all the setbacks. They're within the height limitations there, 45 feet is the required height. They're right to the 45-foot height limit. No roof decks are proposed, or any type of penthouse elevator shafts that exceed the roof. They're not required to provide any landscaping, but they are providing landscaping, about almost approximately 13%, and they're overparked by approximately three spaces, and I'll go into that here. So a mixed-use residential parking requirement of one space per unit was utilized when we calculated this requirement. Per Section 1140Q, which permits a 25% reduction of commercial parking, they were able to utilize that for the commercial component. They didn't utilize that for the hotel, knowing that if there are guests, they're going to absolutely need those spaces. But working with them with the 25% reduction, we felt that the reduction made more sense to reduce the actual coffee house type use, because this use is more of a neighborhood type use. Obviously, it's a Zone C1 neighborhood commercial, so it fits right in with the zoning. So based on the calculations, they required three spaces for the commercial coffee shop. With the 25% reduction, they're at approximately two. So they're still providing those three spaces, in addition to 10 spaces plus two guest spaces for the residential, up to 12. And the hotel is one space per unit, they're providing three. So 15 spaces required, they're providing 18. They are overparked. So during the Public Community Outreach process, the applicant did have a Zoom meeting back in January 2022. Approximately 15 members participated in the meeting. I was also participating in the meeting. Some of the, like I said earlier, a lot of participants raised concerns regarding the architecture, mainly just the bulk and scale of the project. They did have concerns regarding STRs. This isn't a short-term rent, or, I'm sorry, a density bonus project, so that is allowed in this zone, and I explained that to them. They did actually have praises for the architecture, so that was one bonus of the meeting. But like I said, the major concerns were just the bulk and scale, which we tried to, we worked with the applicant on reducing the bulk and scale by providing a lot of glass features. There's a lot of articulation to break up the massing, and we feel that, based on the current proposed project, they've filled their option to reduce the bulk. So with that, staff reviewed the project based on the following. Achieves a balance of residential, commercial land uses, and is consistent with the general plan. It also provides a good transition between the existing medium density, the residential tourist district, which is directly across the street, and the single-family and the commercial uses within the area. The use provides visitor-serving uses, such as the coffee shop and the hotel. The proposed project would assist in meeting the projected housing demand. Project applicant will provide additional housing, the 10 units, as well as pay the in-lu fee for affordable housing. And the project does meet all items for development standards. So with that, staff recommends that the Planning Commission, by motion, firm issuance of the SECA exemption for infill development and adopt Resolution 2022-P13 for approving the project. This concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer questions. The applicant's architect is here, and they'll make themselves known. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Any questions for Scott? Commissioner Balma?
Yes, thank you. I just want to clarify, when you brought up the conditional use permit, CUP 21, it's mainly just for the mixed use in the commercial, not so much the height. The height is already established, so I just wanted, that's true, right?
Commissioner Balma? That's correct. Yeah, it's only for the actual mixed use.
Okay. Then the other question, I was just thinking, is the 45 feet. I know we've had a couple of, or at least one I can remember, of a house on the ocean side that used the 45 foot to the ceiling. How many projects have actually, and where does this 45 actually occur on the other side of the street? I mean, is it pretty much all of the residential tourist zone? Is it just on Pacific Street? Like, where does the 45-foot height?
Well, the 45 height limit would only be permitted for any mixed-use developments along Wisconsin, with its Zone C1 there. Anything south or north, or even east of this, has to abide by either the, I believe, the 35-foot requirement. And there's even portions on, just north of this, on Pacific Street, within the zoning district. Just north of this district of 5A.
Thanks.
Thank you, Scott. I don't see any other questions for you at the moment. I think you indicated we had the applicant's representative here, if they'd like to come forward and present, or just ask or answer some questions. Up to you, sir. Can you give us your name for the record?
Yes, Jonathan Sherman from AVRP Architects. We're the designers on this project. I'm just here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for the, hang on, sir. Don't leave just yet.
I'm sorry, I have a question for you.
Come back up.
On the tandem parking, can you just kind of go over that a little bit, about how that will be managed? I know you said that the residential units will have the tandem parking, but they're individual people. How does that, how do you see that working, as far as, how do you think that's going to fly?
So it's a common thing in a lot of our projects. We weren't showing it today, but we have actually gone back into this design subsequently, rearranged it, so we now can actually do the same amount of parking, but this time without any tandem.
Oh.
So.
Interesting.
But it's not what we're showing here today. But it is something we can achieve. But as far as tandem parking, generally it works. It works better if they, people share a unit.
Yeah.
Again, going back to the subsequent design change that allowed us to do it without the tandem.
Well, that sounds better. That sounds like, I mean, I know it's kind of a surprise to Scott over here, but it sounds like it would work better, I would think, you know, to have it not, because I couldn't figure out how you're going to do that, okay? If you're like, going to come in first, and how am I going to knock on your door? Can you move your car?
Yes. Oh, yeah. We've addressed that.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. This is a public hearing, so we invite the public to provide input. Go ahead, start reading off our slips.
Mr. Chairman, we do have four slips this evening. I'm going to read your names. Just please come up in the order I read, and you will have three minutes to speak. First up will be Joan Bachmann, second David Nasse, third Peter Weinberg, and fourth Betty Ann Markard, if she chooses to speak.
Hello, Commissioners. I'm Joan Bachmann. I live right up the hill from this project and have watched this lot for some time. So kudos, first, I'd like to start with those. The architecture is lovely, very neat. I'm not exactly sure how those cantilevers stand up, but, without bouncing a little bit, but I'm interested to find out. I'm very happy there are no roof decks. Those are horrific for the people up the hill, because of noise, for everyone, whether or not it's in the view. And obviously, this has always been meant to be commercial, so happy to see that. I'd also like to give them kudos for not having Mexican feather grass in the landscape. Very good. Last time I was here, I did speak about that, and you guys didn't mention it to the applicant. We really need to stop the planting of that. It is actually in the city planting. Wasn't put there, but it is now, next to the cup. So it is growing everywhere and is headed to our lagoons. So please, do not ever put that in. It's on the list I've given you of the weeds. Secondly, tree succession. We need to get serious about this. All these palms are planted at the same time. If you look at old pictures of Oceanside, there are no palms. They all come in at about the same time. At some point, we're going to find out they're old and possibly unsafe. Also, they do absolutely nothing for climate change. So we really need to have other types of trees. I think the other ones I identified are another kind of palm. So we really need actual leafy trees, whether they're desert willows or what, to go in there, so that we are planting now. Because the best time to plant a palm was 40, I mean, a palm, sorry, you're never going to hear that from me. The best time to plant a tree is 40 years ago, the next best time is right now. So we really need tree succession in all of our projects. So no feather grass, and yes, tree succession. And then, finally, I wanted to cover this. On the, okay, this is parkway failure across the street, and I'm doing this now so you don't have to listen to me later. We really need to reword the language in the city code that allows them to put concrete where there should have been planting. This is purely failure of imagination. If you're down on the strand, looking up toward this lot, there's a red curb all the way up. It is concreted in. They did that a few years ago. Then the city, you see the city sign there, which means I paid for this, just putting concrete, and as I come across the sidewalk in the lower picture, that's not a sidewalk. Am I supposed to walk into the hole? Like, why isn't that planting? We have got to limit the amount of concrete we're putting in. I understand they have trouble throwing things. They need to talk to me. I can grow anything, anywhere. And on this project, where they're having a living wall, I would suggest mountain mahogany, toyon, and Pacific wax myrtle. They grow beautifully. You don't need a living wall. Thank you.
Thank you, Joan.
Good evening, everybody. My name is David Nasse. I am four-year resident of Oceanside. Longtime resident of San Diego. Grew up in Pacific Beach, and Oceanside was the furthest thing from our mind to come up here during those days. It's amazing what, how Oceanside has blossomed. I've done Solana Beach, Del Mar. It's getting cleaner and cleaner every day. Excuse me. I just think the way Pacific Street is gone and the developments that we've had there, I think this would be a wonderful addition. Not too big, not too gaudy. God knows, we don't need another high-rise hotel, but I think this would be a great addition. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hello. My name's Peter Weinberg. I'm a local developer, kind of interested in getting involved in Oceanside, and I've been seeing, known about this project for a while, I've been sort of watching and tracking it and seeing what's happening. And just, my first time at a planning commission meeting here, I've just been really interested in the process in Oceanside. From my perspective, I just was here really to support the project. I see it as a very responsible, environmentally friendly development of an underutilized site by an award-winning architect. From what I gather, hearing Mr. Nightingale present, AVRP has worked collaboratively with staff to address and mitigate local concerns, especially with bulk and scale, which I've heard as a developer before many times, whether it has to do with adding more glass to improve the view corridors, especially on the ground level. The green wall that they're putting on the side, that's something that I know most developers wouldn't even consider doing, or most architects wouldn't even add in, because it's expensive to add something like that, as well as additional landscaping that's just going to beautify the neighborhood in general. So I just look at this as a great opportunity for Oceanside, very well-designed, thoughtful development, that I understand there's always differences of opinion, whether modern, it's too modern, but it seems like it fits and tracks with the local neighborhood, and I certainly think that it would do well to move forward with it, especially considering what I was reading in the staff report of almost 5,500 projected housing shortfall over the next eight years in Oceanside. This has the potential to make a small dent in that. So that's it. I hope to see this get built soon. Thank you.
Thank you. I think we have one more speaker.
My name is Betty Ann Markort. I put my name down in case I had.
I put my name down in case I had some questions, and I think they were all answered today. But, yeah, my family has property nearby, so I just wanted to see what was happening. Thank you.
Thank you. If you didn't put a slip in, that's okay. You can still come forward. Give you another few seconds before we close a public hearing. I don't see anybody rushing forward, so we'll close a public hearing, bring it back to the commission for discussion. Any other questions anybody might have, or a motion?
I'll move that we confirm issuance of the CECL exemptions. We approve the tentative MAP development plan, two conditional use permits, and a regular coastal permit by adopting Planning Commission Resolution Number 2022 P13 with findings and conditions of approval attached.
Thank you. So, we have a motion by Commissioner Simons to approve this project. Second, or further deliberation?
I would offer a very enthusiastic second. I think the architecture is outstanding. Whoever, if the architect's here, you did a great job. It's beautiful, and so I just have to commend you for that. And working with the staff, you've achieved some great things as far as that café look and the view quarters, and you've been very sensible to all that. I have to just make a comment about the palm trees. I know Joan's very passionate about no palm trees, but in the case of this architecture and this style, palm trees kind of, you know, canopy trees don't really do this justice. So, I don't know what the architect's going to do, but I would say, keep your palette of landscape. I think you did a good job. So, anyway, thank you so much again for coming to Oceanside and building such a beautiful project. This is going to be a great thing for Wisconsin Street.
Thank you, Commissioner Obama. Yeah, and I'd echo that. This looks like a terrific project. I think it'll fit in nicely with the neighborhood there. So, we have a motion, we have a second. Any other discussion? If not, let's vote. Is it working?
It looks like it may not be working. Oh, here we go.
Here we go.
It looks like we were missing one vote.
Oh, I did vote. I did vote. Okay. I mean, will we...
Yeah, let's do it again, just...
My buttons are working.
Hang on, okay. Go ahead, everybody.
Okay, Chairman Resales, let the record show that the motion passes 5-0.
Great, thank you. Okay, moving on to the next item. Item five on our agenda under public hearings is consideration of a development plan, conditional use permit to construct a 14,000-square-foot psychiatric care service located in the Tri-City area. The applicant is the San Diego County Health Services. We'll start with disclosures. Familiar with that area, driven by many times. Staff report. And then, we also, on our dais this evening, got a couple of items. Looks like something from the applicant, and then a letter or email from a community member. Commissioner Dodds, disclosures?
Staff report, and I believe I met with some of the planners, I mean, not, sorry, the developers.
Thank you. Commissioner Obama.
Staff report, familiar with the site, and the, on the dais, I guess, the attachments.
Thank you. Vice Chair Morrisey?
Staff report, emails that we received on the dais, spoke to, telephone call to the developer, and familiar with the site.
Thank you. Commissioner Simons?
Staff report, and I did meet with the planning team.
Welcome, Scott. You got the right presentation here?
Yeah. I think I got it. I was excited for this one. I wanted to show you this first. All right. Planning Commissioners, Chairman, members of the public, I'm Scott Nightingale, here to present Agenda Number Five, where the consideration of a development plan and a conditional use permit to construct a medical office building within the Tri-City Medical Campus at 4002 Vista Way. The applicant is the San Diego County Health Services. They're asking for a development plan to construct a single-story, 14,400-square-foot medical office building with associated site landscaping, parking improvements, and a new emergency access driveway located off Waring Road. I can mention, earlier today, we just got news that the applicant is requesting to remove the emergency driveway that was a part of this project off of Waring Road. We looked into this, we worked with fire and traffic earlier today, and this is something we can allow. They would just have to extend their wrought iron fence that they already have proposed. Instead of having a driveway with a gate, it'd just be a wrought iron fence with landscaping. So, that's what we were proposing as a part of this project. We can implement this as a project condition and state that they would just basically, during final, they remove the driveway, provide more landscaping to the satisfaction of a city planner. But that's what our motion would be, and I'll add that into the final motion. The conditional use permit is the introduction of the actual medical office building, which will be occupied by the psychiatric facility, with associated surface parking and emergency access driveway, which will now be removed. For Article 11, the proposed medical office use is a permitted use within the commercial-professional district, and the proposed psychiatric inpatient 16-bed use associated with the medical hospital is a permitted use by right. But since they're adding a new building into the Tri-City Medical Center, they need a conditional use permit revision. That's the reason for the CUP. Here's an image of the site. It's within its own parcel, still part of the Tri-City Medical Center, but like I said, it's its own parcel. At Zone CP, commercial-professional, has a general plan land use designation of professional commercial. Like I said, medical uses are allowed by right. The nearby land uses consist of, to the north, we have single-family homes, medical office and hospital uses; to the east, which is basically the Tri-City Medical Campus, a medical office building to the south, and the Home Depot with several commercial in-line tenants, and also single-family residential located directly to the west. Well, here's an image of where the facility will be located. As you can see, it would be in the northwest corner of the Tri-City Medical Center, but standalone on its own parcel. The project site consists of 3.77 acres. The total Tri-City Medical Site is 35.57 acres. The site exists as a newly-developed 290 asphalt parking lot with landscaping that was recently approved, oh, not too recent, but back in 2017, under administrative development plan that was approved by the city planner. As you can see here, with now the removal of the driveway, which, it's an emergency access, it would have been an emergency access driveway only for dispatch vehicles. Still, the existing access to the site is only through the Vista Way Tri-City Medical Entrance off of Vista Way there. The proposed 14,400 psychiatric building would require the removal of 88 existing parking stalls. Additional parking would be replaced, which would be part of this proposed development, which would bring us now to an inventory of 199 spaces provided for this, for the facility. They're only required to provide approximately 88 spaces, and with the existing plus the new implemented, they'll have approximately 199. The added parking that was approved and constructed back in 2017 was additional parking for the facility. So, they're basically over-parking the Tri-City Medical Facility in hopes of additional uses that they plan on doing in several other phases, which will come forward to this body at a later time. The site is landscaped at approximately 25%, which is above the requirement of 15%. It will actually gain more landscaping by this new change of removing the driveway and implementing new landscaping off that entrance, emergency access off of Waring And here's an image of the proposed landscaping. Like I said, on this, on this area here for the new emergency access driveway, which would be removed, that'll be additional landscaping as well. Here's an image of the internal floor plan, the typical office-type medical office layout. They do section off the 16 beds, which are on the, on the left section here. The applicant will go further into the operations of the site. They have different levels of security for some of these individuals. Some of the concerns from the neighborhood were regarding some of the patients wandering off-site and going into the neighborhood. That should not occur. Everybody will be checked in, either by a medical official or by a family member, and they will not be able to leave freely unless they have a chaperone or someone checks them Here's an image of the elevations and the landscaping. The proposed landscaping architecture of this development would enhance the site and the surrounding through the buildings, sitting, landscaping, architectural design, and the use of the high-quality materials. As you can see here, this is the image off of Waring Road. You would see the buildings, but a lot of it would be buffered by a lot of the landscaping that would be incorporated. They do provide shade canopy trees, as well as some new low-line landscaping, and a new wrought iron fence, which there are, there has been issues with break-ins on the chain-link fence of individuals cutting through here and making an access shortcut between the facility and the neighborhood. That should not occur by this new wrought iron fence. The proposed single-story building, height and overall scale of the proposed medical office building will be consistent with the pattern of the mid-rise buildings within the Tri-City Medical Center's campus. This is the proposed driveway, which we are now eliminating. They did have a pedestrian access, which was only for emergency operations only, but like I said, that's, this will all be removed. They will, in the event for the construction, they will be utilizing portions of Waring Road like they were for the construction, the asphalt parking lot, for construction purposes only. But after that, this will all be fenced off and landscaped. And here's an image from the internal, looking towards the west of the building from the They did have a community outreach meeting. They actually had two meetings, one on February 2nd and one on February 16th. Approximately 15 members participated in the two meetings. Public addressed the concerns regarding the psychiatric patients trespassing the adjacent residential neighborhood. There was traffic concerns regarding the emergency access, which is now going to be removed. Once the applicant explained that the patients are not permitted to leave the facility with the, and then only without a chaperone, a lot of these concerns were eliminated. So, reviewing this project, staff reviewed the project based on the following: general land use element compliance, the proposed medical office conforms to the general plan of the city, the uses are permitted use by right, achieves a balance of medical office, commercial land uses. The proposed building would not only complement the site, but the existing neighborhood, as well as the Tri-City Medical Campus, and provides a good transition between the Tri-City Medical Campus and uses, and the surrounding medical uses along Waring Road and the existing And lastly, the proposed project would assist in providing the additional medical office care to the community and the county. They'll go into the need for the use. Apparently, the Tri-City Acute used to have psychiatric services here, and since it's been removed, and now there's a high demand for it, so kind of the need for it now. And lastly, it conforms to all elements of the development standards for the CP District. But with that, staff recommends that the Planning Commission by motion confirm the CECL exemption for infill development and adopt Resolution 2022, 202022 P14, proven development plan, conditional use permit for the actual construction of the 14,400-square-foot psychiatric care building, with the condition to remove the driveway and work with staff during the building permit stages. This concludes my presentation. Happy to answer any questions. The Tri-City Medical Team would like to make a presentation as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Any questions? Scott? Go ahead, Commissioner Dodds.
First, I have two questions. First question is that the, with the removal of the driveway, will there, will the new landscaping be consistent with the current, the current planning of landscape?
Commissioner Dodds, yes. We will make sure that our landscape plan checker reviews the landscape to ensure it not only meets the theme of the landscaping within the area that this project is proposing, but also is consistent with the landscape manual and the zoning ordinance. So, yes, that'll be, that'll, we'll make sure that'll happen.
And second question is, it looked like that area seems to be very popular for that shortcut with the, the cutting of the chain-link fence. With the new fence design, how tall is that fence going? For reason asking is my concern would be scaling.
Sure. The zoning ordinance only allows for fences no taller than six feet. In some rare instances, we do allow for eight, but that's if it's a budding residential. Unfortunately, this is not a budding, there's a, removed from the street. The street's in between both of there, so yeah, it's maximum height is six feet, unless... Yeah, that's, it's six feet, sorry. And if I can mention, I did put an email that was received in the last hour regarding that same, same issue, and it's on your, on your desk there.
Thank you, Scott. I think that's it for the moment.
Thank you.
You indicated the representative has a presentation. If you would come up.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Luke Bergman. I am the Director of Behavioral Health Services for the County of San Diego. And the County of San Diego Health and Human Services Agency is the, is the developer, of course. I run the department that, that is the sort of steward of and payer for, for medical services for people with behavioral health conditions, which includes serious mental illness and substance use disorder. I just want to say a few words about what we call the continuum of care, the sort of landscape of behavioral health services across the county, which is really critical context for, for this project, and I think points to how important it is to, within the county generally, to, to meet the needs of folks, and how important it is to this particular locality. So, see if this works. It doesn't. It does, great. So, this is, if you guys are, you can see this in front of you, yeah, great. That's fancy. This is just a graphic image that we use to sort of describe the kind of undergirding tenants of the work that we're engaged in right now in behavioral health care in this county. For many, many decades, behavioral health care has been predominantly understood as a crisis service, as necessarily all about crises. And that's an artifact of longstanding stigma around behavioral health, how it's paid for, but it's really sort of infused, kind of how we think about the services that we have to build in response to, to behavioral health concerns. And it's perpetuated, in a lot of ways, our failure to really normalize care for people with behavioral health conditions, to make it a normal part of healthcare. The way that we represent that is with this inverted triangle. We are heavy into crisis service development currently. That's true, that's been true in the county, it's true across the country and really across the world, and it reflects sort of disproportionate investment. It has longstanding. What we aim to do is to flip what we understand as an upside-down pyramid, currently right-side-up, so that a much smaller proportion of crisis services are supported by a much more robust system of care that's really about continuous engagement. Instead of episodic crises, continuous normalized care that leads to longer community tenure, better outcomes, better lives for people with behavioral health conditions. The way that we are aiming to invert that pyramid is really kind of through three different related but discreet buckets of work. One is crisis and diversionary services. We're busy building out lots of new evidence-based crisis and diversionary services. We are building inpatient services that reflect a new way of thinking about how it is that inpatient psychiatric services should be built, and you'll see that reflected in, in the service that's... the the service that's under discussion today, and that is not as services that people return to over and over again episodically, which is what we see with most behavioral health services. People go, they're stabilized very briefly, they're spit out, and then they return, right? We see lots of what we call recidivism in care, especially in acute psychiatric care traditionally. What we're aiming to do is establish services that are about transitions into ongoing care. So the transition into ongoing normalized or continuous care is much smoother. We see less recidivism into inpatient hospitalization. We see less crisis on the streets predominantly among people with behavioral health condition. The third component is to establish additional residential and long-term care for people with with ongoing needs for psychiatric attention. Our approach in doing this across the county is to is to be very deliberately regionally distributed, and we use that phrase a lot, that we are establishing a regionally distributed model of care. It doesn't make sense to aggregate or congregate all behavioral health care in, you know, only one or two sites in the county. We know that some of the most important parts of what makes people well over time, people who need psychiatric care, is connection to community, connection to family, connection to social networks. And we can really only make that a part of people's care if we distribute care regionally so that it's close to the places where people live who will need care, close to family, close to friends and social network. So we can't just do this in one place or one or two places. We've got to really distribute it regionally. And you see in this slide some of what we have been working on over the last few years. I've been in this in this position for about three years that reflects this emphasis on regional distribution and also reflects an emphasis on the sort of, you know, multiple fronts across the continuum of care with which we're working. So we put a whole lot of attention, and members of the the commission may have heard about some of our crisis and diversionary work in particular with mobile crisis response teams and crisis stabilization units. For example, there's been areas of very active work in Oceanside and in the north coastal region in particular. And you see those reflected on this map in addition to the the blue flags, which represent some of our inpatient psychiatric care efforts, again, regionally distributed across the county. The story around this service in North County, I think, is a is a particularly telling and also frankly somewhat elegant one, reflecting our efforts to invert the the triangles with the try began this presentation. In 2018, we actually had 40 inpatient psych beds in North County. We had 18 crisis stabilization unit recliners. The crisis stabilization units are by regulation not an inpatient service, sort of like an emergency department service, so technically ambulatory, and so we refer to recliners instead of beds as kind of units of care in those services. We had sort of a, you know, kind of a typical distribution of those resources in 2018. Forty inpatient beds, 18 crisis stabilization unit recliners, and a lot of those were actually situated at Tri-City Medical Center owing to changes in in how psychiatric services are regulated that are, you know, kind of put in action by an entity called the Joint Commission. Tri-City suspended those services. They suspended their inpatient service, and they suspended that crisis stabilization unit. Not long thereafter, Palomar Health, because of a change in ownership of the building in which their downtown campus, including their behavioral health unit, was located, shuttered their inpatient service, and we went down by 20 to zero inpatient beds in North County, which is a profound disservice to North County, a profound disservice to people who need psychiatric care in this community. If it's important for people to be getting care in their communities relatively close to where their natural sources of support are, that that scenario, what we faced in 2020, really reflects compromise to the health and well-being of folks living in this area. So we have really prioritized work in in North County because of, you know, because of that rapid and dramatic diminishment in in service capacity. And we've done it in a way that really reflects what we know best from lots of research that's that's done in this area will help us shift that pyramid again. So we've sort of inverted the proportions you can see in this slide, right? We've we have really made a commitment to crisis stabilization services as a kind of top-line priority because we know that that lots of inpatient care can be diverted entirely with that service. We know that people who would only spend a day or two in an inpatient unit and therefore really don't need it can have their problems addressed without that more expensive service in a crisis stabilization unit connected to ongoing care, et cetera, et cetera, with sort of like, you know, with best outcomes for them, frankly, and also in a way that's most cost-effective and best for communities. So we've established these community-based crisis stabilization unit in Oceanside and the in the county's Littwell Health Center. We have another one in another community based in Vista. We've got a 16-bed crisis stabilization unit that's connected to the hospital at Palomar Health in Escondia. We've got 40 recliners at this point. And then what we're proposing as a complement to that, a desperately needed complement to that, is the re-establishment of some acute inpatient psychiatric service in North County, and that would be this 16-bed psychiatric health facility that we are partnering with with Tri-City Medical Center to develop. So a psychiatric health facility is a it's a sort of peculiar category of service. It is, in fact, peculiar to California. It's a it's a species of inpatient psych service that's that was established in in California. It is acute psychiatric care. It's a locked service, and that is a point that was really that you heard Mr. Nightingale already make, been really important in our engagement with the community to understand that. This is not a service that people walk up to. This is a service that everyone who receives it will will be transported there by some or another medical service. A lot of people who will wind up at the in the psychiatric health facility will be transported there from crisis stabilization units if they need to be if they're, you know, the level of acuity needs to be responded to and they need a sort of higher level of care, or they'll be transported from an emergency department. But there will be no sort of, you know, organic human traffic like we would associate with with an outpatient service. This is, of course, located in a quiet area away from the the main hospital, again, locked with full-time security. And again, just to emphasize the point, patients are transferred there. They are not walking up. They they will stay there for between five and seven days. That's kind of a typical length of stay for folks in a in an acute inpatient service. And as they don't just walk up, they will also not just walk out. It is a it is a critical component of this work that discharge planning begins with admission. And so everyone who leaves the facility will leave with an ongoing care plan, and and every kind of necessary effort will be made to make sure that folks are transported onto the next level of of care from the psychiatric health facility. The work that happens there again is sort of, you know, kind of typical combinations of psychopharmacology, so medication, which is an important part of this kind of service, but also behavioral therapeutic work. The space has been designed very much with that in mind. It's a very therapeutic space. It is sort of beautiful to to behold. We think that's an important part of the story that tells, actually, that in order to treat people with these conditions well, we need an infrastructure that is that is sort of up to the up to the job. And we need an infrastructure that reflects the fact that we value people with behavioral health conditions and that we place importance in their their getting better. We aim to have this service operational in late 2023, so hoping things can keep moving along. As Mr. Nightingale noted, we've already been engaged in a bunch of outreach activity, a lot of direct mailing, a couple of public meetings, at which we we found pretty robust attendance, and I would say proportionately active engagement, so lots of questions and and responses both delivered in in live time. I can attest to that as a participant, and also offered in writing. We've we've established a website that includes an FAQ and that sort of thing, so people can learn about the project there. And then in collaboration with Tri-City Medical Center and Aaron Bisac, who's right behind me at this moment, who leads in our governmental work at the the hospital, has been very active in in that body of work as well. This this also reflects a deep partnership with lots of entities. So you see lots of chambers of commerce from municipalities across North County, in addition, of course, to the National Alliance of Mental Illness and and that sort of entity, which has been really important to this work. That's all I'm going to say, pending any questions from you all, though I do want to note that I am I am joined today by not all of the people on this list, but by some some key parties, including Mr. Bisac, who again sits right behind me, and from the county team, in particular, Dave Dobson, who's project manager in the Department General Services, and Steve Schmidt, who is deputy director also in DGS. And and so we are we are available to answer any questions, or I could just keep blathering on forever, probably.
Thank you for that presentation. Very interesting. Looks like we have one question. Commissioner Bauma, followed by Commissioner Morrissey. Go ahead.
Very, very interesting. Thank you so much for your presentation. That was great. It really helped. It just really helped me think about everything you guys are doing, and it's fantastic. So thank you for all your work. I was just kind of looking at the 16 beds, and like I know I saw your pyramid, and they went the other way. Is 16 optimum? I mean, optimal as far as like what you think that all we need is that? I mean, is there planning for future growth in this building as far as structurally and and how it might spread out? I mean, it seems like it's a it's a use that, you know, I'm glad we're going this way, but it might have to expand possibly. I mean, I don't know. What are you thinking for that?
We would not anticipate expanding at this building.
Okay.
There is a provision that is maintained by CMS. It was actually written into Medicaid law many, many, many decades ago, and it's called the Institutes for Mental Disease Provision that prohibits the collection, bear with me here, it prohibits the collection of public insurance revenue at billed at psychiatric services that are greater than 16 beds. Unless those unless those sit within a general acute care hospital that that where there is greater than than 50% of all beds that serve med surg instead of psychiatry. So sorry for those those details, but that's very strong sort of compulsion for us to to maintain the service at the at the scale that you see here.
The other question was, as far as once patients are like leaving, which I was surprised, like you said, four to five days after they might be going through this process, they could actually go to some type of residential unit? Do you have enough of those places? I mean, it's like, and where would they be located?
Yeah, I appreciate the question. This is an area of work that we are very, very engaged in right now, and there's a lot of sort of building the plane as we fly it in the in the world of behavioral health. So this is not the only body of inpatient work that we're working on. You sort of see that in the in the blue flags, the map that I represented. And what isn't represented in that map are the bodies of work that are that we're engaged in now around long-term and residential care. We're adding that to the to the map and adding that kind of capacity, I would say thus far in a kind of catch-as-catch-can way. So one policy that we've established in the County of San Diego is that if there is a long-term bed in San Diego County, it will be prioritized for a resident of San Diego County. Traditionally, that hadn't been the case. So this is a move that we've made recently that's enabling us to capture more of those long-term beds so that we have capacity to transition people into long-term care where that's appropriate. It's an ongoing struggle and also sort of area of opportunity and and also an area of a lot of activity with respect to state policy. So it's it's something that we'll keep working on, and that maybe we'll have opportunities to return to this commission with more proposals around.
Thank you for your work.
Thank you.
Vice Chair Morrissey.
Yeah, I just want to applaud your staff for something that's so needed and and then taken more of a proactive stance than reactive, and I think you're absolutely on the right track. You kind of addressed it, but kind of a couple of questions I had were, you know, where do the long-term, you know, go? And then are you working with any other nonprofit organizations to help? You know, there's needs that I think people have, the homeless have, they got them there in the first place, and so, yeah, you you patch them up and get them out there. But what's, I mean, how can we help those folks from reoccurring and, you know, churches or any other nonprofits that you see that can help that?
Yeah. So we're very actively working with lots of nonprofits. I mean, the department that I run, you might have heard, has a sizable budget. A great deal of its budget is devoted to partnerships with community-based organizations. So among those listed on that slide is Interfaith, for example, which is an organization that's very, very active up in North County. But we work with lots of other partners as well. Exodus is an entity that runs both a mobile crisis response team in this jurisdiction as well as a crisis stabilization unit. So we will continue to to work through those kinds of partnerships. I think if what I hear from you, Mr. Morrissey, is a, you know, an interest in what we collectively can do, I would say that the, you know, a critical thing over the the long haul is to continue to normalize this work. It may be a word that I'm I'm overusing, but traditionally, there's, of course, a great deal of resistance in neighborhoods to to being the, you know, the the sites for this kind of work because they're associated with populations that are difficult and challenging. And that is, in fact, a very real dynamic around a lot of services. Those tend to be outpatient services, right? So that dynamic does not pertain to this particular service that we're describing here. Generally, that, you know, that's where we need municipal leadership and community leadership to really sort of marshal their efforts is around like, how do we make this work as normal as possible? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. I think that's it for the moment for questions. We're going to go to our public hearing portion and invite the audience up. Any slips to speak?
Yes, Chairman Rosales, we have seven. So I'm going to go ahead and read the names in order, and don't worry if you don't know where you're at, I'll double-check. First up, we have Larry Berry. Second will be Helene Bell. Third, Aaron Bisac. Fourth, Shay Benton. Fifth, Tom Demory. Sixth will be Carol Clemens. And seventh, Sue Kozlava. You have three minutes to speak.
Mr. Rosales, is your wife still teaching?
Mr. Berry, could you into the mic real quick?
Yeah. Is your wife still teaching?
My wife retired last Friday.
Did she really? Oh, good for her. One of the best teachers. All four of my kids, when I saw you, went through your was she educated them, and all four of them graduated from University of California, and one just graduated from medical school.
Great. Good to hear that.
Pass that on to her. She's one of the fabulous teachers in Oceanside.
Thank you. I'll pass that on.
My name is Larry Berry. 113973 Brown Street. A lot of the questions were answered. Mr. Nightingale did give me a lot of information, and the and the doc over here did answer a lot of my questions there as well. You know, this in neighborhood, there's a lot of things that we were probably at this present time, the planning staff is about the building and the structure and the facility that we're going to have there. It's not about some of the things that I have a problem with is is signage, and you're right, we don't want a psychiatric ward in our neighborhood. What what the planning department did, and I am so grateful for them, that they eliminate the the access road there, and they're going to put the the fence all the way across, and they're going to be doing that, and I I think that's a great thing. I I found out I found out today that this is a five or seven day, the term that they will be in their facility here. One of the things I've done in the last two weeks, I guess, I went on social media and I asked for people to give me some information about what's happening. Mental illness is, and health is a big thing right now. It's crazy. Excuse the pun there, but what they're, you know, we're doing, I got over 250 hate calls, hate mails to me. People showed up on my front door because I asked for information about this facility and how it's going to affect my neighborhood. And so there is a lot of consternation about putting in a neighborhood thing like this in close to our neighborhood and how we're going to hit this. I got a lot of questions asked. Again, I thank Mr. Nightingale. We got this, the facility now is more enlightened to us. Our next step is when it goes to the city council, and before you leave tonight, I hope you tell us when you think this will go to the city council. But I want to tell you something else, that I have a good friend. I'm 70 years old. I have a friend of mine, Bob. He has a 49-year-old son who's schizophrenic, and that's what I'd like the doctor to answer to this. He has put Bob's wife, she's 68 years old, in the hospital five times. Their physical violence that these individuals have. And he ended up, he told me this last week, he went out and for the last 20 years, his son has been in jail over 20 years. His son, he went out and he said he can't do it. He called the sheriffs, he bought a gun, and he told the sheriff of San Diego, he lives in Vista, he bought a gun and he said, "I'm going to defend myself and my wife," because of his son is schizophrenic and out of control. And he's been in and out of jail for the last 20 years, and what do you do with these people? Now, for a father, how does that deal? And you've probably seen this and how we deal with this, and I guess I'm asking, what is the level for the people that are going to be in this facility? This isn't somebody that's dealing with, I got, you know, you know, I can't get out of bed in the morning because I'm depressed.
Mr. Berry?
Is it schizophrenic?
Could I get you to wrap up your comments? Is that it?
I can talk all night if you want. Thank you.
You bet. Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
My name is Helene Bell. I'm a 30-year resident of Oceanside on Waring Road. My questions in no way discount the need for good psychiatric intervention. My questions focus on the 10 to 12 months of construction disruptions to our community. Our community would like assurance that no additional structures or stories will be added, that the 14,400 square foot structure described in the hearing announcement is essentially the same structure that was discussed at the town hall meeting earlier this year and represented by the plan shared at that time. Part of the construction will include the removal of a large amount of existing soil. What is the assurance that the community will not be negatively affected by this? The community wants a contact person who will be responsible for collecting, addressing, and mitigating any complaints that may arise during construction. Was solar installation and native plant vegetation a consideration of design for sustainability? I appreciate the changes made to the temporary construction entrance that were discussed with me before this hearing. What is our assurance that the city council will vote to accept these changes? That concludes my questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Chairman Rosales, members of the Planning Commission. My name is Aaron Byzak, and I am here wearing several hats tonight. I'm speaking both as the Chief External Affairs Officer for Tri-City Medical Center and as a family member of a behavioral health care consumer. I was born at Tri-City Medical Center, and I've lived in the three cities of the Tri-Cities my entire life. I actually came to Tri-City as a member of the executive leadership team in May of 2018, and within two weeks of arriving there, we were faced with the challenge of having to suspend operations of our behavioral health unit. Now, just to go a little bit further, what Dr. Luke Bergman said, the reason why we had to suspend operations of a unit that had been in place for decades was new changes to federal regulations about ligature risk within facilities. That is the risk of hanging, and you were no longer allowed to have a building housing an inpatient behavioral health unit that had drop ceilings, tile ceilings, and our entire facility had that. So we had to make a decision very quickly to suspend operations of the facility to protect the health and safety of our patients and quite honestly, the license of the rest of the hospital. So, you know, obviously that challenge could not be overcome at the time. We were forced to suspend operations, but we immediately entered into discussions with the County of San Diego about what the future of behavioral health looks like in our region. Simultaneously, I was serving as an advocate for a sibling suffering from a decades-long challenge with mental illness, substance abuse, and homelessness. She had been hospitalized countless times, including at our medical center, and kept falling through the cracks of a system that, at the time, was decidedly not patient-focused and was ill-equipped to help her and countless others in similar circumstances. This confluence of professional and personal challenges was certainly difficult at the time, but I believe it was fortuitous. I felt that I was in the right place at the right time to help make a difference. Since then, much has changed. The County of San Diego has adopted a structural reform of the behavioral health system that upends and reframes historical inefficiencies in how those suffering from mental illness are cared for. Tri-City Medical Center has remained committed, providing high-level behavioral health care at both our robust outpatient behavioral health services, which has operated in Vista for many years, and once again in an inpatient setting at this new Tri-City psychiatric health facility. I'd also note that our hospital has a extensive community outreach program that we call the Coastal Commitment. It stands for Community Outreach and Support Through Active Leadership. We have nearly 90 partner organizations in our community dealing with issues of substance abuse, behavioral health, housing instability, homelessness, things of that nature, and it is really best in class. This project is a key piece of a very complex puzzle that is being built by the county in conjunction with public and private partners, including our medical center. This project, among others, will fundamentally shift the way care is delivered for the most at-risk members of our community and for our community and behavioral health consumers like my sister. I urge your approval of this project. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Shay Benton. I'm a consultant with Cook &amp; Schmidt, Director of Public Affairs. We've been partnering, we've been brought on by the county and Tri-City team to partner with them to manage all the public affairs. We've met multiple of you on Zoom and briefed you, and I really appreciate that opportunity to do that in the past and to answer questions. So that's me professionally. A little more casual and in my life as a mental health advocate and substance abuse advocate and homeless advocate. I, you know, you look at me today and you look at someone who, who looks professional, right? Who has a job, who's here standing in front of you articulate, speaking at a meeting. And about three years ago in 2019, my life was at rock bottom. I was diagnosed with alcoholism. I unfortunately got two DUIs. I was on the verge of homelessness, lost my job, and I had, I went to multiple facilities like this that were, that worked for me. They, like, I was in a facility for five to seven days in that short time period for me, and I have, I had, it's treated now, but I had very, you know, severe mental disorders, similar to what was described earlier. And now I'm able to come out and be successful. I've gotten my car back, my job back, my health back, my family back, my friends back. But the best thing is that I've got my life back and I've got my friends back, and I'm able to come out now and help advocate for projects like this as part of my job. It was incredibly rewarding, and so I would just, for a personal note and a professional note, advise approval. Thank you.
Appreciate your comments. Thank you.
Next, we have Tom Demory.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Commissioner, how are you today? My name is Tom Demory. I live at 3306 Heather Lane. My backyard backs up to the new healthcare facility. I'm not a big fan of the location. I think you could have put it somewhere else, but, you know, it's there, and I'm very happy that they're going to eliminate the driveway and the pedestrian walkway. Would we put a driveway there with a gate and never open it for 10, 20, 30 years unless there's going to be a fire? But I'm really happy that they're going to eliminate it. And I like the question Mr. Dobbs asked about the landscaping. It's going to be all looking good. And what occurred to me all of a sudden is that they're going to have a six-foot fence. I'm 6'2", so anybody can jump over me. You know, maybe you can consider an eight-foot fence for that property. Anybody can jump over me, and I'm 6'2". So I just want to say thank you, Scott, for giving me a call regarding the elimination of the driveway and the fence. I do appreciate it. All we want to do in our neighborhood that we live in is keep our neighborhood safe, clean, and just live there with our, you know, kids and our family. And so they're putting this facility here, which is a good thing, but it needs to be looked at a little bit more closely. Maybe an eight-foot fence, no gate, no pedestrian gate as well. So what else I have? That's about it, and I do appreciate it, and I thank you very much, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Carol Clemmons. You have three minutes to speak.
My name's Carol Clemmons. I'm the mother of a mentally ill man. I'm here in support of the Tri-City Health Facility. I have what's called a lived experience with behavioral health systems in North County. In 2018, when my 25-year-old son began showing signs of mental illness, our family had no idea what to think of his troubling behaviors. We tried tough love, we tried family counseling, who sent us to a psychiatrist. We ended up paying $250 cash to a psychiatrist for a 50-minute session with our son. The doctor handed us a pill of sample medications and sent us out the door without referrals, recommendations, or follow-up appointments. My sister told me about NAMI, the National Alliance of Mental Illness. NAMI offers family support groups. In those weekly meetings, that's where I learned about the services available and the huge gaps in care with those people living with brain disorders. In my son's case, he lacks insight to his disease, which exasperates his condition. He repeatedly states he does not need our help, he is not sick. This part of his relapsing disease is known as anosognosia. This is where the PERT, Emergency Response, psychiatric emergency response team comes into play. We had no choice but to engage emergency services for a crisis that really wasn't happening. It was an acute situation, but we had to engage emergency services. So we planned a 5150 hold as best we could. The PERT team came twice to our home, and my son presented well, and off they went. They told me to cut the apron strings. Finally, the third attempt at PERT was successful, and they asked us what hospital to take him to. We then chose the downtown psychiatric hospital that had terrible reviews by my other NAMI mom friends, or Aurora Private Psychiatric Hospital in Ranch of Bernardo, but we chose Aurora. They came to our home on a planned date and time, and they handcuffed our son. He was completely calm and cooperative at the time and pleasant. They took him to Aurora. This single heartbreaking event was actually what changed and turned him around a little bit. After day four or five, $1,000 a day we were paying, he started to show some progress. Then they discharged him again without any follow-up care or services. My point is that he didn't need emergency services. We weren't in crisis. We just needed something like what you're proposing here. So I'm encouraging you to support this process. And on another note, I was an auxiliary volunteer at Tri-City for 17 years. I brought my dogs there, mostly to oncology, and then I went to the psychiatric ward that's been there for many, many, many years, in that same neighborhood, right by those fences, and there was never any disruption inside or outside that psychiatric facility. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
I'm also speaking for my friend Sue, who couldn't be here tonight. Good evening, Sue Kozlava and her family. They are longtime residents of San Marcos. I am speaking in strong support of the construction of the psychiatric health facility. North County San Diego is in desperate need of this new 16-bed facility. Within the past several years, both the previous Tri-City psychiatric facility and the old Palomar Hospital psychiatric facility were closed. This left North County with no psychiatric beds. I am the mother of a 33-year-old son with severe mental illness that began when he was 19. It took us over nine years to get our son stabilized due to lack of psychiatric beds and follow-up care. He was taken in on at least seven 5150 psychiatric holds, only to be released before he was truly medically stabilized on new medications. He would then relapse by ceasing to take these medications. Then we would have to wait again until he was a danger to himself or others or presented as gravely disabled prior to starting over with another 5150 hold. Had this new Tri-City psychiatric health facility existed, he would have been moved from 5150 hold to this proposed facility where he would remain stabilized for five to seven days while his long-term psychiatric facility would be lined up. This would have saved him years of instability and prevented our son from being caught in the revolving door in the psychiatric continuum of care in San Diego County. The proposed facility will play in an integral role in addressing the current mental health crisis. It'll provide those experiencing acute mental illness with additional treatment options in North County that specifically fit their needs. We have had plenty of experience over the 14 years having to drive to Ranch Bernardo, Claremont Mesa, and even out to Alpine to visit our son when he was held in a long-term vice psychiatric facility. We have never been aware of loud noises emitting from any of those locked facilities, so this should not be a worry to those living near the Tri-City facility. Expanded mental health treatment is critical for the people in North County, and I fully support the addition of the Tri-City psychiatric health facility. Thank you.
Thank you. How many more speakers? That's it?
That concludes them for the evening.
Great, thank you. So we'll close the public Great, thank you. So we'll close the public hearing. I heard a couple of comments or, and/or questions. I'll start with one. Scott, in this attachment with our staff report, there's, I think it's a permit that the applicant has filled out. There's some Q&amp;A information towards the end. Yeah, it's a summary of the community engagement that the applicant did in May. There's a question, or there's an answer to a question about the fencing, that it's supposed to be a, it's proposed to be an eight-foot-high steel tube fence. Can you clarify? Because it does seem to me that the six-foot standard that you refer to maybe is a bit on the short side. Can you clarify, is it going to be eight or six foot?
Yeah, it's proposed for eight. That's the standard for the zoning ordinance per Article 30, fences and walls. I just looked it up. The only way you can have a residential, an eight-foot-high fence, if it's a budding residential, it has to be a solid masonry wall. Unfortunately, this is a wrought, black wrought iron wall, fence, so it doesn't meet that requirement.
So if we wanted to change that, I mean, what do we have to do?
If they want to change that, they can. They just come to the planning department. They can get a building permit for just the wall. They don't have to come out to Planning Commission.
For a wall, not an eight-foot wrought iron. Has to be a wall.
Has to be a wall.
You're seeing that more. There's something that state's doing with a program called Home Key, where the state's buying hotels, and part of the county requirement is an eight-foot fence around the property. And so, I don't know. And then I heard on top of that, that people are cutting through. So maybe we're not worried about the people in the inside getting out, but the outside cutting through. So I would be, I would like to, you know, investigate doing an eight-foot fence.
Commissioner Morrissey, we can look into that and work with the applicant on that.
Okay. So maybe we can pick that up in our motion. The other thing I heard, there was some commentary about the construction activity that might impact the surrounding neighborhood, and I think there was a quest for, a request for a point of contact. I imagine that the contractor and/or the applicant could make that available, you know, that there's sort of a central place where people could ask a question or provide some input or get an answer to something that's impacting it from the construction aspect.
Exactly. Once they submit their building permit or their and/or grading permit, there's going to be an engineer inspector and building inspector that'll be assigned to the project. So typically, they would be the point of contact. They can always call me, and I can reference them to whoever the inspector is. So I don't mind having them reach out to me. I can do that as well.
Thank you. And then perhaps a question for Dr. Bergman, if you wouldn't mind coming to the dais. I don't know if you can answer this question, but it's a good question about the sort of types of clients that would be seen at this facility. I imagine, quite frankly, it might be of a wide variety, but if you could maybe characterize it to some degree?
Sure. So we would anticipate seeing people whom we would designate as seriously mentally ill at this facility. So some of those folks may have co-occurring substance use disorder conditions, but that wouldn't be a primary diagnosis. The primary diagnosis would be one of a number that fit into the sort of broader designation of serious mental illness. That includes schizophrenia, bipolar disorder, major depressive disorder, those kinds of things. So combination, it could be either, you know, a psychotic spectrum disorder or a mood disorder.
Great. Thank you. Any questions either for Dr. Bergman or staff? Thank you, sir. Okay.
Can I make a motion?
You certainly can, Vice Chair Morrissey.
I recommend that we follow staff's recommendation and confirm issuance of the CEQA guidelines, Article 19, Section 15, 332. We approve the Development Plan D-21-4 and CUP 21-2 by adopting the Planning Commission Resolution Number 2022-P14 with findings and conditions of approval attached herein. And then how do we want to address the eight-foot fence?
If you want to articulate that staff maybe look into it, or more assertively, if you want to say we would like.
We would like an eight-foot fence there.
Okay. As proposed in the presentation, also, we have a condition that we'd like to add of removal of the driveway.
Thank you for that clarification.
We can add that as just one condition, that we'd work with the applicant on incorporating an eight-foot fence or wall that abuts residential, and then, or, and/or maybe landscaping on the Warring roadside. We'll have to talk with the police department to see if they really need that transparent on that section. And if that's the case, maybe we can just have landscaping. But definitely on the residential portion that abuts this property, we can work with them on incorporating some type of wall that's eight feet.
So, all that.
So I think we heard the driveway that's going away, and it'll include landscape that's characteristic of the rest of the development, and then that you would work with the applicant and/or OPD to look at opportunities for increasing the fencing to eight-foot and perhaps a masonry wall to the degree that's reasonable. And you'd have that interaction with the developer, the applicant, see if that's possible.
That's great.
Capture it. Okay. Any other comments or questions or? Sir, we've closed the public hearing. If--
If I could for a moment. Mr. Chair, my name is Steve Schmidt. I'm the Deputy Director with GGS with the County of San Diego. And I just want to clarify on something that I think I heard before, talking about an application for a building permit with the City of Oceanside. Is that what I've heard being discussed before?
Yes, for a grading permit and a building permit. Are you--
So we already sent a letter to the City of Oceanside that the County of San Diego will be the AHJ on grading and construction. However, on these issues of fences and things like that, we certainly would like to work with staff and satisfy your concerns and construct fences according to your wishes. However, that would work within your organization.
Great, thank you. Okay, so we have a motion made by Vice Chair Morrissey that included a couple of items that we've articulated a couple of times to staff. Any further discussion, or somebody would like to make a second on that motion?
It would be my honor to make the second.
Great, thank you. We have a motion, Vice Chair Morrissey, a second by Commissioner Dodds. Any further discussion? I'd just like to say thank you for the presentation. Very informative. Clearly, this facility is needed for a number of reasons, and I think you've been very open to community input and then the idea that maybe we build a couple of other elements into this approval process. This would go forward to the, as a recommendation to the city council next, and it would be staff to schedule that. We have a motion, a second. Let's vote. Staff, did you have a question you wanted or a comment before we vote?
Chairman Rosales, just wanted to clarify. Tonight, the Planning Commission could serve as the final acting authority on this project unless it gets appealed to city council for one reason or another.
Okay, so this body is approving this this evening, and it will not go to the city council for final approval unless it's appealed. Great, thank you for that clarification. Let's go ahead and vote.
Let the record show that the motion passes 5-0.
Great, thank you. And thank you, everybody, for your input this evening. Okay, that will conclude tonight's public hearing items. Again, item six is being continued. The Ocean Camp is being continued until July 25th. For your input, if you could take your conversations outside. Thank you. Appeal of city planners determination. We don't have anything on tonight's agenda or discussion items either. So we will go to city planner and commissioner reports. I don't really, don't really have anything this evening, other than a question for a city planner. A vacancy on this commission. Any input or information on when that might be filled?
Chairman Rosales, we're waiting on feedback from the city manager's office on when a potential workshop date could be held. Given the July recess coming up, I'm not sure that there's opportunity to do it before then, so it may be not, it might not be until August or September until we see a workshop scheduled by the city clerk's office.
Okay, great, thank you. I'll be, do we have another Planning Commission meeting this month planned?
There is one scheduled, Chairman Rosales, there is one scheduled for the 27th of--
27, okay. I thought I saw that. I'll be absent that evening, but I'm sure Vice Chair Morrissey will fill in just very nicely for me. So--
That'll be a good one.
Thank you, Tim.
Thank you. That's all I have for me. Vice Chair Morrissey, any updates or--
No update. Thank you.
Commissioner Obama.
Nothing to report. Thank you.
We don't have Commissioner Custer tonight. Commissioner Dodds?
Nothing to report.
And Commissioner Simons?
To report. Thanks.
Great. City planner, we'll turn over the last bit of the meeting to you.
Thank you, Chairman Rosales. Just to give you an update on a couple upcoming items to the Planning Commission. On the meeting of the June 27th, we have scheduled a CUP to convert the Marty's Valley Inn on Mission Avenue to an SRO hotel. It's been in process for quite some time. It's been serving as a de facto SRO currently, so it's coming to formalize that use there. On the meeting of July 11th, we have scheduled a zoning text amendment to update our current, our local density bonus ordinance. It's been three years since we updated it, and a number of legislative cycles have passed which have updated density bonus laws. Ours is currently out of date, and it's not consistent with state law, so we need to make it consistent with state law. Also, at that meeting, scheduled tentatively a project known as Tierra Norte. It's a general plan amendment, zone amendment, plan block development to just change, the physical developments proposed is just to change the land use and zoning on a 25-acre combined parcel on the south side of North River Road, east of Douglas Drive. It's been in process since 2013.
Yeah, a long time.
Long time. At the meeting on July 25th, we have scheduled a new single-family residence within the St. Malo community, and the Ocean Camp project should be ready for consideration that evening. And then moving on to city council, at the meeting on June 22nd, again, we have the two appeals of the Whaley Street project and the Cypress Point residential project. And moving out to August 10th, we have a climate action plan progress report going to city council. The same GPE alternatives you saw recently will be going to city council. And aforementioned density bonus ordinance update and update to home occupation that you considered in March will also be going to city council at that time. Coming up on July 13th, there's going to be a community forum hosted at the El Corazon Senior Center to discuss farmland conservation techniques in the effort to preserve farmland and farming out in Southmore Hills. This is in the context of, we have a climate action plan implementation measure that we have to satisfy, and this is an effort to put 50 acres of farmland in Southmore Hills under conservation easement. And finally, today, we distributed an email with an opportunity this Friday for a planning commissioner seminar hosted by the Institute for Local Government. So if you have any questions about that, feel free to reach out for me. Sorry about the late notice. We only became aware ourselves recently. It's a good opportunity, especially for the new planning commissioners, to get a good taste of, an overview of what the planning commission is responsible for. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Yeah, thank you for sending out that, that meeting, you know, so the new commissioners, if you have time on Friday, that'd be probably a good place to get some input.
It's all there.
Yeah, it looks like it's about 9:00 to 4:00 in the afternoon.
Word, John. Thank you.